To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Most gracious heavens, Father, we thank you for this day that you can be with us. We pray, Lord, that you be with everyone here, that this business tonight is conducted in a manner that will bring you honor, Lord, and that you forgive us for being in the question.
First item on the agenda is... Approval of the October twenty-third, twenty-eighth, there's... Uh, council agenda, do I hear motion to approve?
Yes.
Got a motion by JJ, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Erica, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Next item is September twenty-third, twenty, twenty-five minutes, do I hear a motion to approve the amended version?
I'll motion approve.
Alright, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, as your city clerk, it's not your authority to change my minutes.
Uh, I'm, your proportionate, okay.
I understand.
The, got a motion and a second to amend, and, or to approve the amended, now the court's open for discussion, and the, we had a question as to whether or not the item five in here was approved. It is, it, uh, we want to go ahead and have a show of hands of those that voted yes on the amended agenda. Show of hands on those that voted yes, that's four, that approves the agenda, so that's stated, that's the only amendment?
It doesn't work that way, ma'am.
Yes, it does.
No, sir, it does not, I'm sorry, but you are incorrect, but as the city clerk, I have already completed these minutes, and now I have to go back and add this to this minute, so I have to be able to show that there's a history on why we voted just now, to show a history on why it, it, you have to show that transparency.
We did.
I understand, I'm not changing my minutes, and you don't have the authority to change my minutes as the city clerk.
I'd like a legal opinion.
I have gotten legal opinion from the municipal, I've already done that.
That's fine, I'd like a legal opinion from our attorney.
Mayor, the council is asked to approve the minutes at every meeting, oftentimes they make amendments or adjustments to them, and so this was done to correct the minutes, I see no problem with it, I think the council can vote to amend or to change those.
They need to vote.
The amendment to the minutes, or the amended minutes were approved.
They need to vote to strike those minutes then, that's the only way that these minutes can be changed, they need to strike that comment from there, and they need to vote that they are striking those comments, that's the only way that the minutes can be changed, because we've already had a history on our minutes from before, then he brought it up at the work session, so then I got something on work session, and now he's brought it up at this council meeting, so to be able to show transparency and a history of why this has happened this way, they have to show up in the minutes.
Mayor, my opinion's not changed, the minutes have not been approved until the council just did some, and so those are now the official minutes of the proceedings, so the October, that's due September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five.
I'm not changing them, I was just...
I, please, for your interrupting me, uh, those are the amended minutes of the proceedings, and so now you can go on to the October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five as well.
Okay, the October fourteenth, twenty-five minutes, I would entertain a motion to approve the amended version of those.
I'll motion approve, can I?
Got a motion from Mark, do I hear a second?
Second.
Got a motion from Mark and a second from Erica, um, is there any discussion on this?
These minutes will not be changed either.
Um, all in favor, say aye.
Before we go further, what changes are, I mean, what's amendment on it, so let's just give...
Okay, on the, on these, there is a partial transcript rather than minutes, and the, uh...
Mayor?
Yes?
If I can, on the first item, uh, of the, uh, of the minutes that, as they were presented, that's for resolution to authorize and order for the back IRS people to cast hands, uh, there are some statements here, uh, that I think, uh, are designed to capture a part of the discussion that was occurring, um, I think that's some editorializing, and I think I'll be, uh, strictly from the, uh, from the minutes, I think it's complete, uh, there was a, there was a discussion about, uh, what some of the parts of the, uh, of the IRS transcripts that were received, or the IRS statement that... Mark Williams had, uh, a statement, uh, I think it was some confusion about what some parts of that meant, Mark Williams, uh, kind of brought some clarity to that, that's not included, so I think this is partial, uh, your minutes in the past reflect, uh, the, you know, who made the motion, who seconded the motion, uh, you know, what the vote was, it could be by recommendation, that we do the same here, because I don't think this has been accurate, it's about on trail of the discussion that occurred on the...
Further discussion?
It also states in the bottom of the minutes, in the bottom of the page, it says minutes are not related to transcriptions of the proceedings, it says that on every single one of my minutes as well, so...
All in favor, say aye.
One minute, one minute.
Okay.
We're approving the original?
So, there is a, um, there's one of them that's an original, and there's one of that is, um, uh, I think that doesn't have that highlighted paragraph, uh, and it just has the vote, the, you know, who made the motion, who made the second, in the vote count for that particular item, and it doesn't include the statements that are included.
Okay, so amended, what is the one of that?
Yeah, so why we don't want a paragraph in there?
For one thing, it's not accurate, uh, for another thing, I think it's editorializing, uh, so the paragraph that's in there is not an accurate account of the, of, of that discussion, there was more of that discussion that occurred, I could just mention that Mark, uh, uh, has some statements in that regard to correct what, what the confusion was, and that's not included.
Yeah, I don't know if Mark collected that.
Yeah, and so rather than have a partial account of the discussion, I think it's best just to have a discussion with him.
Well, why can't we have a little discussion?
I mean, uh...
That, do we have a whole thing?
You, you, you could, the whole thread of discussion would have to be transcribed, there is a, uh, there was an audio recording of minutes of anybody at the meeting, so anybody that watches the meeting can hear it for themselves, uh, but I think having a, uh, kind of a partial account is not something that you want to have in this, on this particular issue.
No, I, I don't want to have a partial, but if that would resolve the issue, I'd do it, because I know clearly Mark collected me on that issue.
Um, I'm sorry, can I say again?
Yes.
Uh, one thing is, if we, in our packet, which would be included, right, these are all our items saved, is the IRS's actual statement, so we have never done an account like this, that I can call in our minutes, ever, so the precedent has been set that we do it like it's been done, and if the IRS statement is included, what, I don't understand what the issue is, because this isn't what we typically do, that is my thoughts, what we typically do is the amended version, and that's what we typically do, no matter what, no matter what it is, that's what we do, so I don't know why we would put up an extra paragraph and an explanation when clearly the IRS statement is there.
You're welcome to pull our, our minutes from previous meetings, and we have done this in the past, Mr. Mayor.
I'm not saying it happens all the time, I'm saying that typically it's like what it is on these minutes, a blurb, and it says this person passed it, or this person, um, approved it, this person seconded, and it went on.
The reason that I made that statement to put in here is because on the resolution it says for twenty twenty-four, but on the paperwork that was provided, it says also for twenty twenty-five, so that's what those are for.
Well, also, it isn't that the interest that was accrued for twenty twenty-five, so that's not the actual statement from twenty twenty-five.
But that's at the back of the paperwork that was provided to the council in that packet, said twenty twenty-five.
But that was on the interest, so we owe a bill from twenty twenty-five.
That's what it says, interest.
Interest on the notice from twenty-four.
From twenty twenty-four.
The petition's from first quarter in twenty-four.
So, is it interest?
Hang on, please, Mayor, let her finish, thank you.
You're dumb, you're not controlling the making.
I know, I'm trying to figure that out.
You're trying to, yeah.
I'm trying to figure out, as a clerk, so we can get this resolved.
That's right.
Thank you.
So, that's interest from twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five, but on twenty twenty-four bill, so if you don't pay a bill on time, we accrue interest, right, and so it, it's not a twenty twenty-five bill, it's a twenty twenty-four bill, correct?
Correct, but the invoice that was provided in our council packet showed that that was twenty twenty-five.
Because it was the statement date, the statement date said, I remember clearly, October sixth, that the statement date came out, of course, interest is going to accrue on a bill that's not paid from twenty twenty-four, but it's a bill from twenty twenty-four, correct?
Correct.
And the interest occurred in twenty twenty-four?
Twenty-five, so if you don't pay a bill on time, you accrue interest in twenty twenty-five, it's a twenty twenty-four bill, that's all I'm saying, is that if you don't pay a bill on time, we accrue interest as it passes, right, now we're in a new year, so the interest is there, it's not a twenty twenty-five bill, it's a twenty twenty-four bill, that has accrued interest in twenty twenty-five, so I still view it as a twenty twenty-four bill, it's just that we're late on paying, and therefore, interest accrued in twenty twenty-five, that's how, but if that is included, I don't see, and, and I, I don't recall every, everything you do, I'm sure you've broken it down before, but most of the time, it says this, so I don't agree with, with this, is what I'm saying, and it's because it's a twenty twenty-four bill that accrued interest in twenty twenty-five, with the statement date of October sixth, twenty twenty-five.
Now that I understand why she wanted to put this in, and your explanation of why two thousand twenty-four, the interest rate wasn't, yeah, because there wasn't a backup that could now, okay, okay, most of the, uh, possessed of them are, there's no explanation of yes or no, and who was it, so...
So you're saying you're okay with the amended version? Is that what you're saying? Okay.
I think that, I think, do you know, I should discuss it with you, but I hope so.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, and that's it, pass. Next item on the agenda is the financial reports, uh, entertain a motion to accept the, uh, financial reports for water in sewer.
Seven.
Got a motion by Erica, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by JJ, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, like sign, that's approved. I saw Carl just walked in, uh, one of the financials for the general fund, or the city financials, uh, I mean, Carl's working on getting those, uh, repaired, and we, last time we talked about it, uh, he was saying we should have a corrected version by the first, or by December, so I'm going to ask if we table them again this month? Do I have a motion?
Some, of, I'm sorry.
Let's do it, any motion?
So we can just have discussion, so, yeah.
Got a motion by JJ, do I hear a second? Second by Mike, and that's discussion.
So, can we get this done, maybe after, maybe on December, but it's been a few months we haven't added, we table, maybe we table, I'm ready to see some results here.
I'm sorry, I couldn't wait longer. It all.
Honestly, can we have that sooner than December, because it's, we've been taping this financial...
We can, I, we will have financials by December, I cannot promise you that they will be absolutely perfect, there's a lot of work to do, especially now, a lot of work. That's, doing the truth, that's the truth.
So we might have it by December?
I will have financials for you by December, but I can't, I'm not going to stand here and tell you that everything will be exactly balanced, will all be exactly what they should be, there's, there is a lot of stuff to go through, reconcile, to get to the right number, to the number that, that needs to be on the voucher, because you've got, you've got really good viability for your vouchers, it doesn't work, that means, that means that the people that usually say you have a viability to actually owe you, it's impossible, so there's a lot of work to do. I mean, you want, if you want, if you want me to run through it and do a half, you know, like, yeah, I can do that, or else we're going to write...
I'm not asking you to do that, so don't, don't take it personal, I'm not asking you to do that, I'm just, I'm just hoping we can get these numbers sooner, because the city's financial keep being postponed, postponed on that table, and I'm just like, it's taking more time, I think it's taking more time, that's...
I will have financials for you. Okay, I'm done.
Okay, I mean, that's my question, and that's your answer.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, like sign, those are tabled. Next item on the agenda is the department reports, uh, by department.
Um, today we did a fire retention meeting, so I remember we did, seven hundred and sixty kids, there's five different, there's two, and a pop, and three, under section, so doesn't want kids and, obviously, that's, that's successful, uh, for master, so we'll go on budget.
I'll rather repair.
I'm trying to, we're writing some... So...
I wish I had a better...
Thank you. Thank you.
Next item, this police chief.
Hey, guys.
Thanks.
Chief. It's, uh, business as usual, uh, I was off there for a couple of weeks, and I had a little health, uh, issue, I had to proceed you're done, um, whether you guys knew this or not, apparently, there was one day while I was out, that our vehicles had been grounded, insurance hadn't been paid, I'm not sure if you guys are aware of that now, but, uh, I just want you guys to be aware of it, I got a phone call while I was sitting at home, that, uh, we had to instruct all of our police officers to stay in the police department until the insurance was paid, um, fire chief can talk more about that, uh, because he was here, and apparently, he ran down the phone rock and repaid it, but, from my understanding, we had operated about a month and a half, two months, with no vehicle insurance, uh, which is against the law, for one, two, uh, we set ourselves up for a lawsuit waiting to happen, so, um, but that's why, that happened when I was away, so, um, but other than that, backups, and the insurance were good, um, as soon as that happened, and like I said, the fire chief can talk more about it, if you guys have questions about that, I, I didn't speak with the district league, I did not have any conversation with them whatsoever, again, I was out, um, dealing with a medical deal.
When was that due?
That was in September, when, uh, that happened, you remember the day, I'll let Gary talk a little bit more about that.
Um, so, our, our insurance card expired September sixteenth, I believe, and while he was gone, I seen we didn't, we didn't have a big card, so I went over to City Hall and talked to Keith and some other departments over there, and they did too, so we started firing against the league, and that was how we would expire, and so, the mayor had a check, and I remember checking out the next night, he just got the number, so...
So who's, Mr. Mayor, who's supposed to pay those?
That was actually the, bills came in June, they were supposed to be paid by June first, and it got cut off on the nineteenth of July, I mean, July first, it got cut off the nineteenth of July, I guess, when, because they cut a second, or sent a second notice right after the first, or, right around the middle of July, and so, that was, that was before we got Carl or anyone else in finance.
Well, still, you didn't answer my question, when I said, who?
It was when, it was when we still had our clerk.
I've actually spoke to the municipal league on that, uh, they did an update to, it's called a software, Orgami, so when they did an update to the Orgami, they, for the last previous years, all of our mail was going to the P O Box thirty-six, so when they did the update to the Orgami, it sent it to P, uh, to one thirty-four North Main, we don't get mail at one thirty-four North Main, and the post office does not send our mail from one thirty-four North Main and put it into our P O Box, they send it back, so we weren't getting any mail from that one thirty-four mailing address, is what the, the ladies from municipal league was telling me, and so, Michelle at municipal league is trying to try to figure out what had happened, and why the address transferred from one thirty-four, or from the P O Box thirty-six to the one thirty-four North Main.
Who's one thirty-four North Main?
That's our physical address, but we don't...
I know, I'm listening, what, we're...
Because we don't receive mail there, we have no mail box, the post office doesn't deliver it there.
So... That's really not good, I mean, I, honestly, I'm not, I'm not happy with that, and I don't know how we can, at least, what can we do to make sure that doesn't happen again, that's...
I think we've had, I think we've got it all fixed, you know?
How?
I've worked with municipal league and the city guys, and I think, you know, I have it on my, on my computer also, that they, they insurance has been listed, I don't catch it, and so I don't think it should happen, because I'm tracking it now, you know, it's pretty, a lot of other people were tracking it, but I won't wear a pair of them, and I think the police chief should track it also. Shouldn't have our week.
I said, have our week. It's being tracked.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, the planning commissioner's report.
Good evening. Like I mentioned, I was a week, um, we've had a couple items on the agenda, one was the appeal for the pain law program, this was, uh, the, uh, newly annexed, this is a bill submission, we had a permit coming in for retaining wall, neighbor had appealed the, the legislature decision of approval, there's a process that goes, you know, into the approval of it, but planning commission is the, under the board's assumption, we reset that, V C A, they are the, um, group that decides if there was a group inside that side, they have the administrative decision to review visibility, and then we have preliminary platform control, it was a vigil, um, this is the one that we've been working on, out of the wall, everything still points to, they just wanted to look at reworking some of their sewer lines, or services, and better monitor the future connectivity, so they have got a new, um, plan to us, and the druthers have been looking at it, you know, along with others, and C D, and they're going to come back, do some collaboration, they'll probably come back to us in, um, the work session, and they'll be looking at this and stuff, uh, that being said, we're probably postponing the planning commission meeting for next week, if we don't have any action. So, the only other things that is on there is the other stuff we've already looked at that you had before y'all tonight, the, uh, resuming of the property on the fourth lane, we'll talk about that, if you have any questions, we can talk about that later once we get to it, and then, you know, the general updates, the general updates have a little change since the last, um, we're still working on the legacy project proposal that was accepted, and moving forward with that for next year's C M P conference in conjunction with the water show. And of course, that's something I did not know, the updates we had this May, three are meeting to continue work on this, I don't even want to say, uh, middle of the next week, you know, November fifth, so, we're also still working on that, so... Was there any specific questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, this is the water and sewer department.
Hello, everyone. So, start with the open work orders, um, we've got a lot of meters to set in Hillcrest, uh, painting one leak that we know of, which is a leak in Firehanger, that's scheduled to be repaired on Monday, we were waiting on parts for a few weeks, because it was going to hydrate, um, and then we have a water tap set for, thinking at the water loss report, you can see it jumped from thirty-seven to fifty-four, uh, I believe the reason for that is when we timed up the gallon shooting, gallon line was leaking about two and a half hundred gallons a month, it increased the pressure in the line, and then created leaks elsewhere, to address this, I went into our K M Z G I X lab, and found the remaining gallonize that we developed, and so we are working on a game plan to get all that abandoned, we just abandoned another four hundred foot stretch of that on route road, um, but as of right now, there's an estimated twenty-seven hundred feet of galvanized in the ground still, based on that map, there, there's, might be a blur, because we don't know, and about six hundred feet of unknown pipe, so there's, we don't know the composition of the pipe that could be galvanized, could be the old poly that is burning at this point, so that is the game plan, um, so, any questions?
Well, we discussed that like we last item this morning, regarding the water loss, there was some recommendation on previous event, they did the, when they did the, and locating the, you know, water loss, it was, I think there was a huge recommendation in there, so what are those recommendations, and where we have those?
Yes, so, with the chemagreed study, as much as we're asking, they came out and located our system, uh, listening for leaks, uh, using acoustic device, their recommendations, they had about seven, um, we are currently doing five of those recommendations, the two that we are not doing are, we're working towards one, uh, one name, it was also suggested that during the investigation, a high quantity of leakage could potentially be occurring in particular communities due to excessive pressure, and so they recommended that we install P R Vs or other pressure management solutions, that is being worked into with the water master plan, they're going to tell the strategic ones to put area valves, pressure valves, provide some relief for, for upright, the other recommendation is, uh, district meter areas or data-driven solutions, so a district meter area would basically, you know, you'd install meters in strategic locations on your system, and then, so, take Brickwood for example, you've got a loop system, you install a meter at the entrance of that pipeline toward Brickwood, and then you take the difference between the usage of the residential meters and the water that's coming in to the system, and compare that difference in that, and so you do the water loss in that area of the distribution system.
Can I ask you a question about that? So now that these new developments going up, is that going to be a requirement for them to put that stuff in on the front end, like Hillcrest, and then the one on Rainbow, Dr. Bruce's old property, is, is that something that can be typed into now?
Right now, it's not, you know, specs to require developers to do that, it's certainly something to discuss, if we'd like, um...
And to that, as, as the water master plan gets completed, we're in the front of higher pressure areas, which are, are going to follow the lower elevations for the city, so once that master plan actually outlines that, it'll look like, it'll look at that in totality as development takes place. So once that master plan actually outlines that, uh, it'll look like, it'll look at that in totality as development takes place. And so that can be a requirement for those specific subdivisions. And it will depend on the each specific subdivision that comes in and the, and the specific location they're located.
So the new ones that aren't yet currently, like Hillcrest would be out for that because they're currently under development? But the other ones, or can the city put it on the front end before home stop popping off and using water and sewer?
Um, part of that recommendation was, uh, or the second part was data-driven solutions, so, for example, Rogers has sixteen hundred, uh, pressure sensors throughout their system. Um, you know, you have a sensor here, a sensor here, if there's a discrepancy between those sensors, it kind of pinpoints where they need to be looking for leak. So they use correlation to find, you know, it's, it's this far from this sensor, this far from this sensor. Uh, that's another recommendation that we can also look into. And that would allow us to go out there, use our acoustic leak detector and pinpoint exactly where the leak is before even surfaces. Because according to the study, ninety percent of our leaks never come to the surface, which is what we're having struggling with now.
That's what I was asking you that question, because beginning to the point, we're fixing some, we go down and then some new one. And also, are we putting them in sleeves now? I mean, the pipe, are we putting the pipe, are we putting sleeves now, is it a spec now?
Yes, it's in specs. Pipe that goes on the roadways.
Yeah, so, I think we need to start looking, I'm saying that because you're doing a great job, I'm not curious, I think I wanna follow this with me. Uh, we really need to start looking ahead of time, I mean, if two thousand eight, if we were looking at putting the pipe in the sleeve, maybe we wouldn't have as much pipes that we have to replace now. So I don't want ten years from now, whoever is here, of course, I'm not here, whoever is here, I don't think that, no, ten years ago, they had done something to help that. And that's why I want to look at outside the box and look at other recommendations that we can get, and what we can do. Like the, this water study, the master water study, the annual is gonna do, that's great. I hope we had done that a year ago, so we were, two years ago. So we need to start looking into future ahead of time, not fixing it for now. That's my recommendation is, and my challenge to you and myself is, the reporter, the main reporter, not happy with what we see. And you work, you really hard, you, who is working hard, you're doing a great job. It's just, we don't know what those pipes have leaked before. When the previous changes on them, they start passing. So we need to think outside the box, that's my challenge from myself and you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Next, by the engineers' report.
I'll touch on several, I'll touch on several large sewer projects that are currently underway. In your package, it's got the notes from last night's meeting, high points, the NACA project, we're wrapping that up as we speak. That's, uh, we got actually two sign-offs, landlord sign-offs, we're trying to finalize as the elevator contractor drainage and complete, uh, funding request with, uh, N R D. The, uh, existing wastewater treatment plant and pump station, we're currently decommissioning those, the contractor out there now cleaning the basins, uh, as well as we're moving the pump stations out of the golf course and turn those over from the original agreement to, back to, uh, course. And then, lastly, I want to talk to you a little bit about a water service area expansion. A pair of screen in this, uh, we went over this last night at the water sewer committee meeting. Uh, this is a, a general reminder, water and sewer service areas are like school district boundaries, they do not follow, uh, city limits. So it's an exhibit I have in front of you at the moment. Uh, what's in red is actually what you currently have on file with the Arkansas National Resource Commission as your water service area. Uh, this color here, uh, is Rogers water, and then the purple color is Bentonville. You know, last of what you'll see here on the bottom, um, is Mill, uh, warning utilities. Uh, as part of any expansions that we do, we actually have to prepare reports, submit that to the National Resource Division, uh, that will hold a public hearing. Uh, we have to notify all the, uh, all the water purveyors in the proximity of the city and give their comments on any expansions that we're planning. Uh, we have reached out to the, um, Springville is generally in, in agreement with what our plan is, and let me show you real quickly what, uh, what our plan is.
Does that currently include the original, the annexing or, or is that still with Rogers?
It's still, it's still with Rogers, since, uh, we haven't noted in the report that it will transition upon our connection, our service connection to that, that area, uh, as well as the others that we, we gave up at the annexation, uh, the annexation side. What you'll see here in yellow is what we, uh, have developed in the water and sewer committee, where we're planning to recommend and having discussions with our neighbor. How to do a little better idea. Highway two sixty-four is running right through here. And then highway one twelve runs through here. This white blue line is the twelve inch water line that was installed with the sales tax bond issue that was passed several years ago. And this green line is what was the NACA sewer line, which here is always water to, to NACA. So it makes sense, uh, where these areas in yellow that we continue to move further west and join up with our neighbors, makes a lot of sense here. Uh, one challenge we have, uh, you can see, uh, Bentonville city limits in this white gray blue color. Actually, it stems down all the way to highway two sixty-four. But you'll look at our service area, it dissects that section of their city limits. We have a water service area prior to those, uh, uh, not, not annexations, yeah, annexations, uh, from the, from the property owners that live in that area. So we presented this to Bentonville, we've been working on this over a year, and their response, excuse me, their response was, uh, rather than just the water service areas, is to present a franchise agreement where we can actually service, uh, their residents within the city limits. And we have that, and Justin has it, we are reviewing that, uh, determining which path do we need to, how do we need to move forward? And that's, that's what I'm gonna ask tonight. Do you guys have a direction or would you like us to move forward with that? Now, two things, we, we got a couple options. One, we can go ahead and submit this to N R D as we have presented here. Um, and then have to go through the public meeting and there will be comments back for our neighbors associated with that. Or we can do a combination of franchise agreement and adjust this submittal to N R D, which effectively, we can remove the area here, uh, where we overlap and only ask for things outside of the city, that can be our city limits, if you will. Now, part of this franchise agreement, there's a couple things that we've been needing to negotiate. Number one, um, any improvements that are generated in this area, if we spend our money, uh, to invest in that infrastructure, uh, we would like any impact fees to return back to the city of case earnings based on our current ordinances. And, uh, probably the other larger item is, at some point, they reserve the right to come in and take that infrastructure, uh, whenever they continue to build from north down to that area where they can connect to it, they would like that to revert back to the city of Bentonville ownership. Uh, we recommend, if that were to happen, that they would purchase that and, uh, whatever value that is at the time. So, again, looking at a couple of options, if we want to move forward, uh, as we have been working, and go ahead and present this to N R D, or a combination of what we have here today and a franchise agreement with the city of Bentonville. Should be noted that, uh, the city of Bentonville does have a franchise agreement with, uh, Centertown as well. And, uh, based on my understanding, it's worked well, I've not heard anything any different. But with that, I'll open it up for questions.
I think as we discussed last night, we need to see that franchise agreement and understand it before we can really make a decision.
Okay. Well, we can look, be visible Justin and see if there's an opportunity we can have it back at the next work session. I'm gonna show you what that looks like. Now, I anticipate this would go back and forth, negotiating back and forth between each entity, that's gonna be approved by both governing bodies.
We can get a good, good taste of what they're thinking, you know, before the negotiations, just to see if it's going in that direction, if you're ready.
Any other questions? Clear as mud. All right, the last item, engineering report, uh, just a couple of projects, uh, to discuss, the West Wild Road sidewalks, we received our hot approval, that has been advertised. Uh, we are opening videos on the thirteenth of November at two P M, and so we'll be back for you the next city council meeting with the recommendation of a, uh, to work contractor, contractor of extended sidewalk. And of the other item, November one's mine is a traffic signal. Uh, poles will arrive at the contractor's yard at the end of this week, and it's scheduled to begin construction next week. Uh, they're still coordinating some with Sweat Co., uh, but that is the latest as of middle of the day today.
Those are delayed, the poles, it's not, I don't understand what they're gonna spark this month.
The poles were completed, they just have not been shipped, they have been maintained on the, uh, manufacturer's yard. That's what we've been waiting for, is to get them to the contractor. And we've been following up every few days.
What are you gonna do, right?
We're pushing. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, this sewer capacity study, so we have our main one complete, is that done yet?
We have a draft that we reviewed, uh, I guess last month or previous month's meeting, we're making a few adjustments based on comments that we've received, uh, from the water survey meeting, we'll be ready, I would say, in the next couple of months to present to the council if y'all would like to see it in the night.
Okay, 'cause I have had, um, some questions, I met some of the jobs today, but I wasn't able to. Um, I remember that, that Huffington property that was here, they, with all these subdivisions coming in, you know, they, the number of homes that would have been like on that property, um, it was my understanding, we communicated that, didn't know if it could go forward unless sewer capacity study was complete. So, how are we going to do these developments without the sewer capacity study? Is it, could you expand upon that? Do you understand what I'm asking? Because we're approving a lot of development, but I know one development did leave because they, we didn't know if that particular land could work for the sewer system and the new lift station. So, with all of these developments being approved, are, are we worried about sewer capacity? Because a lot of homes have gone up.
No, they, they have been evaluated on a case-by-case basis. So what the sewer studies actually do, it would stay in a holistic view of what's available in the city, what's left in the city, and identifying areas for new trunk lines to go, um, uh, to be installed throughout basins where, where nothing exists now. To maximize, and to help us size the future capacity of the sewer. So what we don't want to do, for example, what we don't want to do is install an eight inch sewer line in an area and develop coming in ten meters down the road, and all of a sudden that eight inch is not enough for that new development. We size it and determine that that needs to be a fifteen inch or a larger sewer line and, uh, to potentially do cost share or ask the developer to install something larger than need, than needed for their development. Uh, what is going on right now with the model that we've developed, as developers do come in and ask for capacity to your current pressurized system, the step system we have, that has been modeled, and we can put that in the model to determine if that capacity exists for that size of development with the current infrastructure you have and get it to the NACA lift station. And we have used that on a couple of occasions already, uh, with, uh, with, with developers. But depending on the, the property, I'll say, the Adamsville, for instance, that is one of the, the requirement was placed on the developer to show us, to study our system, their connection point, to ensure that there was enough capacity, and we reviewed and commented with back and forth several times, uh, to determine if they could in fact, uh, connect to that, to the system.
Okay.
So that has not stopped any of the development.
Okay.
Now, we may have, we may have told some developers that this is in process. We can't tell them what the ultimate size of a grabbing line is until it's completed at this point.
Okay.
And we have not stopped.
I think what maybe it constantly is, like someone in neighboring town, there are capacity for.
Yes.
Connect us, so, are we, that's the question, where we add on that?
Oh, no, I, I think we are comfortable. Having, performing this study at this point is a good, puts, places you in a very good position. Not only that, the, the lift station that we just completed there, the, the station in NACA, it was designed based on the current size of the city of case rings with expansion potential. We're talking about this water service area we just opened. So, uh, I can't remember exactly, but we have places for two additional pumps in that lift station capacity.
You have placements?
We have placements for that. So as we grow, we will need to expand that lift station, we'll add a pump, and then we'll add another one. Now, ultimately, at some point, depending, I mean, as, as far as we can plan with our crystal ball, um, that's all we can do. Depending on densities and some of the plans, I think you'll talk about tonight, uh, as we're looking at, uh, other densities as well, um, that plays a role in this. So some of our neighboring cities, where they're running into challenges, infrastructure that was laid fifty years ago was not based on a higher density of what we're seeing in the wind today. And that's where some of the struggles are, uh, becoming greater. But as far as we're concerned, I think we're planning very well.
Okay. So we're, we're good with what we currently have on the agenda, what we currently have approved, and more development to come. And we're comfortable with the sewer?
It should be noted, five years ago, that was not the case. Because we were, we knew that due to the growth, we were gonna reach capacity, uh, with the current treatment plants and the drip fields that we had, and we had to make a decision on whether we stop growing or do we make an investment to go to NACA? And that's where you have the vision to move forward and go to NACA, playing for that. And that was not the case that we were.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. Next, by the engineer's report.
Good evening, council. Uh, a couple things, obviously, we have a franchise agreements on the agenda, uh, later, so looking forward to getting those done and, and in place, uh, coming up, uh, at the next work session, I'd like to have a draft, uh, a few revisions to personnel handbook, uh, that we've been working on. So, I'm gonna have that one, uh, for you. I'll also have, you see the water franchise agreement that we've talked about. Uh, I'll, I'll provide you with the version that was provided to us from Bentonville, and then I'll provide you also with a version with the director that did changes to it, um, to, to handle some of the issues that Daniel, uh, brought up. Uh, also, uh, uh, some, some things that are in the works, as Daniel mentioned with the NACA project now, that's commissioning is, uh, decommissioning is happening with some of the implements over the, uh, over the golf course. We're in a position to, uh, uh, to be ready to, to, to do that transfer. That's already been approved sometime back now, it's been a, a, a year or two, uh, of, of where that was approved. But there may be something where we decide, maybe a good idea to bring it back through, just to get, uh, uh, to make sure we're all on the same page. Uh, but essentially, we're gonna be transferring those assets that were maybe over to, um, you know, over the golf course. Uh, and then there'll be, uh, a release of some of the easements that are there that we're getting, uh, of water and sewer easements that we need for our system. Uh, if you can recall all that from a couple of years ago. Uh, lastly, oh, I had a meeting at, uh, Holland yesterday, uh, with through a number of kind of, uh, project issues, things that are going on. Uh, we talked about drainage and, uh, we're gonna continue to be, uh, looking at that. I'm looking at it from a, a point of view of, of what type of changes might we need, uh, just based on things that we've, uh, we've encountered. So we're gonna continue working on that. Uh, the agenda on that meeting was too big for us to complete in one day, so we're gonna, uh, meet back and, and, and do that. But I, I do think that, uh, we may have some changes. But I, I do think that, uh, we may have some changes coming up on that in the next couple of months. Uh, so that's a little part of it, maybe, you know, uh, uh, maybe coming in January is some changes and some updates that we need to do. So, uh, those are just, uh, four different things that are kind of ongoing, uh, right now. Any, any questions for me?
Thank you. Next is third territory report. And then the mayor's report, mine's very brief. Uh, we are currently working with all the department heads on budgets since that time of year. Hope to have you a budget very quickly to be able to review that their input is on their departments. It is, it is coming from a group effort. It's, uh, being directed by the department heads. So that should be coming to y'all very soon and, um, looking forward to preparing for next year. Next item is a couple of comments. Any couple of comments?
Um, I am going to ask, um, you expect any kind of update on the drainage? Um, letting her know that we keep kicking this can down the road, but my house was impacted by that, that happened a hundred and three days ago. Um, it does seem like we love to table things here, so I'm just curious if there's ever been a resolution or a plan of action? Or if my, on the search number two, so my home has been out of the city because I can't, along with you guys to do anything.
So did you hear that the attorney and the engineer were meeting about the drainage issue?
I did hear that, but I heard that because it takes more than a day to handle it. But I feel like we've never had anything to go on from, and I'm just going to hear that. So I did hear that on listening, but again, I don't feel like anything is coming out of it because it's not a priority maybe, or I don't know.
Or it's a process, it takes time.
I agree.
Yeah.
But I don't think this is the first flood that anybody's wanted to experience from my knowledge, um.
I don't think so either. Thousands of years of floods and that's why we have engineers to try to help figure it out. I don't know what else we can do other than rely on our engineers. I mean, do you want to hire engineers? Do you want us to like have them do a battle royale? It's just, you, you've sworn at us before and it's just, we're not kicking this down the road. It's an important issue to us. There's not much more that we can do. I can't come to your house and figure it out. I don't know how. I just, I literally don't know the engineering or math. So I can't figure it out. I have to outsource that opinion to our engineer. And then he's going to come with a plan that they're going to, you know, again, try and figure out. It, it isn't going to be instant though. It's going to take.
I know, I expect it to be instant, but I don't think anybody is. But I want to try to personally ask when something is going to happen. And I'm not directly targeting you or anyone on the city council here. I'm just saying, every time I come to this meeting, it's going to really work, okay, work on the center. I have a submission and that's fine if it takes time, but I think over time, there should be some sort of update that we can expect. Like, who are you meeting, when, what's coming out of that? Um, I've been arguing that before. I couldn't simply just continue because this goes down the road. I mean, listening today, like, financial reporting being tabled, like, I mean, what are we supposed to expect? I'm not targeting you. And yeah, I did come in and say that it seems like things are shit show because to be honest, he does. Every time I come to this.
He's no person.
The mayor looks around at everybody else, like who's, where does the blood stop? Like, who is the one responsible for anything?
Yeah, I have asked our engineer multiple times about your stuff and he is looking into it. Your situation is a little complicated. You, you bought a home in a place that didn't have curbside cutouts. I have personally come after you spoke and another person in your neighborhood came down and looked, actually it was before you spoke, because you were surprised to see your pictures up there. Because I cared so much, I asked our engineer to do it. I said, could you please look at this home on the corner across from the detention pond? So I have asked for updates. There is a process, um, but your situation is, is very unique. And, and he has looked into it, I have, we, we have updated it. We, if we constantly, I mean, he has to do his job. I, I did my job as a council member, I thought, and came down and asked him to look at your particular property, which you questioned, why was my house up there? And I said, well, I asked him to look and saw your damage. So the council members do care and.
I had a house before it began to happen. And once again, like, I'm not, again, I'm not trying to blame anybody because it's just not true. We get, we don't need any more of this and this is what happens, right? I'm just saying, I have come here since that flood happened and hoping that you guys are working on a resolution. If you say you are, I can totally trust you and assume that you are and come back next month and go figure something different. But I'm not confident that that's the case because I've been here a few times and nothing has changed. Um, I come here and meetings are started by arguing amongst everybody here in this room. How do I apply it so I can trust that you guys are running through the city the way it should be run? I mean, we didn't have insurance on our police vehicles and they couldn't drive for a day. We're supposed to follow the law in this city, but you can't even carry people or be able to monitor the streets for us. So I'm not, again, not here to play, I'm just simply saying, like, I'm a homeowner in the city. I care about the city. I would like it if something were to come out of this eventually. And maybe like a timeline, like in a month, we'll let you know who you're supposed to or something and not just.
We, we, we've already, we've, we've already been letting you know. We, we have a couple of engineers working. I mean, again, I, I just, I, I don't, you say, I'm not coming in just, but that's exactly what you're doing. You, you've come down to two meetings, you've sworn, you've not been to go to the light. You know, we, we are essentially, all six of us, discover the mayor, we are essentially volunteers. We do not, I mean, the amount that we get paid is, is like a per diem. We, we are all volunteers in this capacity. We all have full-time jobs and children and lives. Our full-time job is not, oh my gosh, you know, citizen's having a drainage problem. I'm going to have to, uh, put everything on hold and, and this is, we have to rely on the experts. I mean, that's what we have to do. What is the alternative? That's my question, is what is the alternative?
I'm not blaming you. I'm not blaming any of you. This is the experts that are supposed to give us solutions. I'm just asking who we need to expect. Is that a bad thing for me to ask? I'm not coming here and I'm like, I'm like, I'm like, trying to be nice to say, like, I'm concerned about my home. And it wasn't just my family that lived up in the back, but there were several of them. And I'm sure they would all be happy to come up here and share their stories, but it's not me who's obviously upset everybody. And I'm probably a part of.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I was going to say there were kind of in a back and forth and that's usually what we don't do at public events. But, um, I, I was going to say something just to maybe, you have a very particular problem, it's a very complex problem. It's a problem that, that is very challenging, uh, to, to, to solve. What I, my recommend is, it, it, it doesn't lend itself to solving at a public comment period. This is really a period where people kind of, and, and, and have a comment and just wonder what the council does. What I might suggest is that, um, uh, it would just happen immediately, but connecting with somebody up at the city that you can come and have a sit down with and a discussion, uh, where you get some updates and things like that. It may seem like you're not getting an update or there are, there's quite a bit happening with, with, with limited resources and things that, you know, gravity only goes one way and, and, and there's some big challenges there. And I think it may leave the impression that nothing is happening. So, uh, if, if you want to, after the meeting, I'll come talk to you. Maybe I'll come do it with somebody, because I think it's, this is more of a, you probably need to come into city hall and have a sit down with somebody at their kind of share your concerns, give you some feedback and then they kind of have that interaction because it really does lend itself well.
Well, that's one of my comments too. I have concerns that the city is not being managed well. And it's not based on my particular issue that I have, but it's based on the minutes that I see, the reports that are coming up here and how I see that nobody seems to take ownership of the things that are happening in our city. That's my comment. It's not anything that anybody in particular, I'm just saying, I have concerns about that. And as a citizen of the city, I hope that those concerns are addressed eventually, but I don't have comments.
Let me try to read one more time. Ma'am, can I get your name?
L E T I S H A.
What subdivision are you living in?
I live in Hurwata.
And I do want to make a statement as well. Uh, as we mentioned a few minutes ago, we went down this week and sat down and discussed the whole host of issues. We are working on a number of different drainage issues. We're working on a number of different issues as a city from streets to, uh, growth to drainage to expansion of water and sewer and development. And those are all things that we do, they do require experts. And we have experts engaged and we address those items. I've got a three-page list that I work off of every day and things come on, things go off, and things are taken care of. Those are my responsibility. I take care of those responsibilities. It doesn't always happen quickly and some things happen more quickly than others. But that is where we are right now and that is the process that's not always. So the next item on the, or do we have any further comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, council, I appreciate it. Just to get a little bit, introduce myself, I'm Mike Armstrong. I'm running for family court judge. Uh, I've been practicing law here for about twenty years in, in northwest Arkansas, last fifteen, doing family law. And mentioned dealing with issues in the city. And I think that a lot of citizens probably have issues with the courts here in Benton County. And I, I'd love to be able to visit with anybody today about that, find out what kind of judge you're looking for in Cape Springs and in Benton County. I've been doing this for, like I said, about twenty years, fifteen years of domestic relations work. I've got all that experience that I bring to the table. I think the most important aspect of, of a family court job is families dealing with that. And I, I was going to have another visit with anybody about that. I hope to earn your trust and your support and vote on Mars or to give us Mike Armstrong. So thank you.
Anyone else? Next item on the agenda is the old business and that's ordinance adopting the master street plan. Do I hear a motion to sort of suspend the rules and place this on third final reading? Some, got a motion by J J. Did I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Erica.
Mike?
Yes.
M C?
Yes.
J J?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
City of Cape Springs, Benton County, Arkansas, ordinance adopting the master street plan, plan use map for, uh, city of Cape Springs, Arkansas.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve? Some, got a motion by J J. Did I hear a second?
Second.
Second by M C. Any discussion?
Yes. David? I'm looking at this information you gave us that, uh, it came with city council report.
Yes, sir.
It says, uh, mixed-use neighborhood categories along Route sixty-four, East Small Avenue were changed to mixed corridor. What is it?
It's basically just a nomenclature change based on the downtown master plan and all that work we've done.
Does that change when we can go in those areas?
Essentially, no.
Essentially, no.
Yeah, I mean, it's the, it's, it's just a nomenclature change in the mix. So what is it, uh, mixed-use corridor? That's what it's changing to, correct? Yeah. So, mixed-use corridor, uh, I'm going to try and abbreviate this just a little bit because there's a little bit in here. So, mixed-use corridor, also with wide spectrum uses encourages all housing types from single family to multi-family. It recognizes the existence of some strictly partial line of use within these areas. Mixed-use corridor encourages mixed-use development that better responds to multi local needs. Uh, places in the door that parking on the side of your developments and enhance the aesthetics of Cape Springs through architecture, site design, and the whole landscape improvements.
And like industrial?
It has like industrial in there, but it would still have to be zoned, actually allowed for light industrial. And the only place we actually can show the light industrial is, um, down there, yes, yeah, yeah. But it still, for something like that to be allowed, we have to, some of that. And, and, you know, as we transition into the zoning code, you know, like we have to encompass or, kind of create those categories, right? Light industrial, like currently we don't have a light industrial category. So if someone right now came to us and said, I want to do this and they call it light industrial, well, we don't have a light industrial technically category. So we would have to, once we work on that, kind of create that and then create what's allowed in light industrial. Typically, light industrial would be where you're allowed something like, uh, storage, light manufacturing, things like that, not like, not heavy industry essentially, you know, is allowed in light industrial. It's, it's, it's something that cities have put in place down those corridors to implement some of their moderate uses.
David, can I just pick up on there? Um, I, I may have misheard this sentence you was reading from there. I just, um, on mixed-use corridor, derek, uh, barber, I just wanted to mention that within that pink color, that light pink color actually says, um, I'm sorry, that, that it does not encourage light industrial.
I didn't read part of that.
Any storage facilities are not compatible within, in you see, other light industrial items. And so those would be, of course, you dial it in with your zoning map, um, but this resource is suggesting that light industrial items would go into that, um, light industrial category that's actually on the map, which is known within the city.
I'm having to just spit it out, which I didn't know, if you had. My concern is with nomenclature. This is a future land map, but once it's, if it's passed tonight, it immediately goes into use. So it's not a future land map, plan use map. It's a current or will be current. This is.
It's going to be adopted, but it's to guide the future development of the city. It's not something, you know, just because.
I understand, I understand. It's a guide. But I was here when you first hired on and we had the discussion about temporary with the R B park. And the explanation that the city captain, the planning commissioner used was that fit, that expansion fit because it meant the criteria for park and it meant the criteria for recreation. And therefore, an R B park fit in that. I still can't wrap my mind of why a R B park meant a park and then recreation. Yeah, there's a golf course there, but that has to vary on the R B park.
Well, there you go.
And I'm concerned that our planning commission still operates that way. That's my concern with all of this.
Yeah.
We are becoming or seem to be trying to become Rogers or Bentonville in the way we're expanding. Now, everybody has a right to sell their land, don't get me wrong. But with all these use, we're going to start button up against everybody else and eventually we're going to run out of space.
Yes, sir.
Am I not correct?
Well, on the R B park side, if I'm not mistaken, zoning where R B parks are allowed in commercial zoning. So if someone goes down, maybe the highway is in his own commercial, that's allowed. So that is something that has to be, so once we get into the zoning code, which, you know, hopefully by the end of next year, we'll have something, we'll be back here doing the discussions again, we'll have in the zoning code more stringent rules on things like R B parks and storage, things like that. Because if I'm not mistaken, R B parks are allowed by right in commercial zoning. And that piece of land along the highway at some point was re-zoned commercial and it's allowed by right. And there's no, I mean, there's, there's nothing that we have to stop it essentially that way. You know, that, that, and again, that's, that's zoning on future land use.
I'm not, I wasn't against the expansion of it. It's the way it was done that bothered me, saying it meant criteria for park and meant the criteria for, uh, recreation. I mean, again, you get into nomenclature of yours, but I'm not a trusting person, so.
One, one thing I might add versus to, I, I do appreciate that comment about running out of space and, um, and development happening all around N W A and Cape Springs is not immune to that. Um, and so. Um, and so one thing that I do appreciate about the direction that the cities go with this map and the planning commission from that downtown plan like they've envisioned, um, the map is encouraging mixed uses and more density within the downtown area. And I don't think that is, um, I mean, that is very much in line with the, the history of the downtown of this community. And so more that we can encourage, um, with the mixed uses and, and density in the downtown area, we can save more land, you know, outside of that.
The CPZD should say, do that also and it doesn't have to be in the downtown area. Because of violating church.
Yes.
For putting in many, uh,
Well, we also don't want, we don't want to move forward having an PCD all the time.
I agree with that.
And so that, that, that goes back to the zoning code that I think we're, we're trying to incorporate where people don't have to, um, clog for PCD. And we allow some of those things by right. But I, I fully understand we're coming from South Town and there, there's numerous things that, once we get to the zoning code, we're going to have to find and, and, and. Yes, sir. Anything else?
No, I just encourage you to get the zoning code done as soon as you can because we've, I've been asking for that. We get like, we're going to pay you them. And I would really like to see that because we get the supplement in downtown master plan. Now we got it. Let's just start working on those zoning code because when we do PCD, it's okay. As, as you said, and I agree with it, PCD is not gonna resolve our issues. I mean, it's a good thing for now, but we really need to get the zoning code updated and created, basically.
Uh, uh, we're, and we're continuing to work on it now that, you know, we've got some of this other stuff on.
We can get that done faster if we don't have to talk about this future land map on our terms?
I mean, we could focus on a little bit, you know, a little bit, whatever you're thinking about, I figured.
Any further discussion?
Second.
Roll call.
M.C.
Yes.
J.J.
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Mike?
Oh.
Okay, that passed for one.
Mayor, there is a response. You have one? There's a response.
Yes. Uh, next item, I propose a motion to approve the emergency clause. Some. We got a motion by J.J. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by, uh, M.C. And roll call.
J.J.
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Mike?
Yeah.
M.C.
Yes.
And what was the number on this?
Twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one.
Twenty-one. Thank you. Next item is a resolution to authorize the mayor to negotiate a contract that would have to be progressed. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Some.
A motion by, uh, J.J. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by M.C. Any discussion?
Please update that website. That's the only solution.
All in favors, they have?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. And that was approved.
What number was that?
Twenty twenty-five dash fifty-five.
Fifty-five. Next item on the agenda is an ordinance to amend in its entirety the, uh, franchise agreement with Black Hills Energy. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Some.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got a motion by M.C., second by J.J., uh, roll call.
Mayor, you're gonna have to wait for the, the reading.
Yes, I'm sorry. Motion to, uh, suspend the rules in place of some third reading by that title.
Some.
A motion by J.J., and a second by M.C. Okay, now roll call.
Mark?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
M.C.
Yes.
J.J.
Yes.
It's ordinance twenty-two. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, okay. Or December two thousand twenty-five dash twenty-two, City Cave Springs, Benton County, Arkansas. An ordinance to amend in its entirety or December ninety-eight, granting Black Hills Energy in for its successors to write privileged grant in franchise to construct, maintain and operate natural gas system and light gas mains along and over, across and under streets, avenues, alleys, roads, highways and other public ways for the purpose of distributing and selling natural gas, providing for the regulation of the five hundred cent gas consumption system, repealing all ordinance in conflict thereof providing for emergency clauses for emergencies.
All right, do I hear a motion to approve?
Some.
Motion by J.J., second, second by M.C. Roll call.
Erica?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
M.C.
Yes.
J.J.
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Okay, that was approved. Do I hear a motion to approve the emergency clause?
Some.
So a motion by J.J. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Erica. Roll call.
Mike?
Yes.
M.C.
Yes.
J.J.
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Okay, that was approved. Next item on the agenda is ordinance for the franchise fee for bright speed. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules in place of some third and final reading by that title? Got a motion by J.J.
Thank you.
Second by, uh, M.C. Roll call.
M.C.
Yes.
J.J.
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
For December two thousand twenty-five dash twenty-three, City Cave Springs, Benton County, Arkansas. Ordinance granting your franchise to Bright Speed and Orkless Arkansas LLC, FKA, and retail of Orkless Arkansas LLC on the cap of itself and its operating affiliates. Bright Speed to operate and maintain a telecommunications system. The system in the, in the city of Cave Springs, Arkansas. The city declared an emergency for the purposes.
Do I hear a motion to approve? Some. Got a motion by J.J.
Second.
Second by M.C. Roll call.
J.J.
I guess.
Mark?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
M.C.
Yes.
Okay, that was approved. And do I hear a motion to approve the, the emergency clause?
Some.
Motion by J.J.
Second.
Second by M.C. Uh, roll call.
Mark?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Mark? M.C.
Yes.
J.J.
Yes.
All right, that was approved. The next item is item, uh, uh, the Carroll Electric Franchise Agreement. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules in place of some third and final reading?
Some.
Got a motion by J.J. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Erica. Roll call.
Erica?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
M.C.
Yes.
J.J.
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Okay, it's twenty-four. For December two thousand twenty-four dash twenty-four, City Cave Springs, Benton County, Arkansas. Ordinance to amend in its entirety or number one hundred is granting Carroll Electric or its successors to write privileged franchise, construct, maintain and operate like our distribution, uh, system and, uh, two electric lines and related equipment along, over, across and under streets, avenues, alleys, roads, highways and other public ways for the purpose of distributing and selling electric power, providing for the regulation of the conduct and set life distribution system, repealing all ordinance in conflict thereof providing for an emergency clause for emergencies.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Some.
Got a motion by J.J. Second. Second by M.C. Roll call.
Erica?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
M.C.
Yes.
J.J.
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Okay, that's approved. Do I hear a motion to approve the emergency clause?
Some.
Got a motion by Erica. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mark. All in favor, I mean, uh, roll call.
Mike?
Yes.
M.C.
Yes.
J.J.
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
All right, that was approved. Next item is the franchise agreement with Southwestern Electric Power. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules in place of this one on third reading?
Some.
Got a motion by J.J. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mark. Roll call.
Erica?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
J.J. Mike?
Mike.
Mike.
Yes.
M.C.
Yes.
J.J.
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
I think we're on twenty-five. For December two thousand, uh, dash twenty-five, City Cave Springs, Arkansas. An ordinance granting to Southwestern Electric Company and successors to assign, assign and allocate some franchise to construct, maintain and operate lines and disturbances and appliances for condemned electricity in and over through streets, avenues, alleys and public places in City Cave Springs, Benton County, Arkansas, declaring an emergency for other purposes.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Some.
Got a motion by J.J. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mark. Uh, roll call.
M.C.
Yes.
J.J.
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
That was approved. And do I hear a motion to, uh, pass the emergency clause?
Some.
Got a motion by J.J. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mark. Roll call.
J.J.
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
M.C.
Yes.
That is approved. Next item on the agenda is an ordinance to rezone approximately twenty-five point five acres on Ford Lane. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules in place of some third and final reading by that title?
Some.
Got a motion by J.J. Do I hear a second?
Thank you.
Second by M.C. Roll call.
Mark?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
M.C.
Yes.
J.J.
Yes.
For December two thousand twenty-five dash twenty-six, City Cave Springs, Benton County, Arkansas. Or three percent approximately twenty-five point five acres. There's a real property located at five seventy-nine Ford Lane, for better or poorer. They wanted to see what they want residential art for the City Cave Springs, Arkansas.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Some.
Got a motion by J.J. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by M.C. Any discussion?
Yes. Um, David, you said ask questions at this point. Um, how, this would be the most residentially dense area in all of Cave Springs then? If this goes out as R three, we have Hillcrest, we have On Ground, we have Brentwood, we have Bridgewood and we have the Weirish property. Would that be a correct assumption considering the already was with Hillcrest, um, when they started moving in?
I mean, yes, until we have other developments in other areas also. I mean, there's gonna be other subsidies that come in and become other growth and-
Okay. My concern with this property, um, is drainage. We saw it happen with Hillcrest and, um, it, I, I think it is extremely dense on that side of town. And, um, I know they went down to, to an R three and I know it came approved from planning commission, but I honestly do not think it's in the best interest of the city. That's my opinion. And I would be sure.
Any further discussion? Any feedback, how much you said?
Well, yeah.
If the applicant, if that was the applicant's year.
Oh, well, yeah, I was on the, the, I wanted to speak to them.